Welcome. I will call together the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on June 7 at 7:00 PM. And as we start, I'd like to ask the parliamentarian to read a statement to update us on some protocols.
Yes, and I will read this before the main council meeting as well. I do know who would be members of the audience going to hear this. This has to do with masking, and Oregon Ocean Regulations require the city to continue to enforce the mask mandate in the city's indoor spaces unless proof of vaccination is presented. That being said, please do not assume that those who are wearing masks tonight have not been vaccinated. While some may have been, others may have have, while some may not have been, others may have been vaccinated but chosen not to provide any personal vaccination information to the city, or simply didn't bring their vaccination card with them to this meeting because to come into this room without a mask, you have to show that proof. Even if vaccinated, some people still feel more safe wearing a mask in any indoor public setting. So that's the statement, and I will read it again prior to the council meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So does anyone have any comments on the items on consent? Any concerns about those? Seeing none? Any councillor concerns? With that, we are ready to start our first agenda item, which is discussing the city council goals. And is the city manager going to start us off?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce Sarah Singer-Wilson, who guided us through a goal-setting process. 14th and 15th of March, I believe, was the date, and you will all remember because you were all there. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, and she's going to kind of walk through the final product here and answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Good evening, council. It's good to see you all again, and it's exciting to be back to finalize our goals tonight that you guys set back in May, or on the 14th and 15th of May. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen so everyone can see our presentation here.
While you're setting up, I have a technical question. This is our first time back. Is there a control piece for this? This is a new system here with the...
I believe, I believe that it's still the same operational...
I see a number eight is listed.
Yeah, so that if they push their button, that's request to speed.
I don't, I don't know where I'm at anymore.
Where's, is that your button?
Am I, am I here or here? Because I don't have a screen here.
Can we just take a second and start with councillor Linville? Start with councillor Linville, push your permission...
Yeah, I think I tried to map them out on this sheet, but it's...
Okay, so four, and then if she...
But I was off the screen.
You were?
I wa, if I sit in front of my seat...
Oh, yeah, you are.
I am off this, I am off the screen.
So you need to be over by...
So do I need to scooch further to the mayor?
Well, I think I'm over ca, okay, right here.
You're good right there, councillor.
Okay.
That's five, and this is...
Can you do that again? Oh, you're...
Six. I don't know which one it's supposed to be, though. This screen's off.
Okay, you want to use six? I don't need to take up so much real estate, put all this paperwork.
Do you want to come closer to me?
I'm good right here.
You're good right here, okay. I'll go in between. Perfect, I'm good right here.
Yours again.
So am I going to be this one?
Okay, then I can add...
Okay.
We're a little rusty.
It's been over a year.
We'll skip to Charlotte. Councillor Leehan, could you try your button?
Yes, I did.
Nice, it works.
Well, no, wait a second.
And you, and you got to say on...
It is, and it's extremely easy to work.
There you go.
I think I can do this.
And we can do a placard for the next meeting. Laminate a placard, so you'll have it, as long as everybody's sitting in the same...
So this is not being used this time?
But it's, I'll just look at these.
Okay, cool.
Sorry, Sarah, we have a...
Don't, no apologies needed. Yep, it's okay.
Is that monitor not working, Andy? You can have this one here.
No, wait, I got, I have two.
Oh, you do, okay.
There's nobody can see me choose, okay.
Nobody knows you're eating.
No one knows me.
Scoot over here, but that might put me in the wrong part of this...
Make sure everybody remembers to hit the button on their mics so that it picks up for the recording, too, when it's, when you're speaking.
You want it to be lit up when you're speaking.
Perfect.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We're, we're back to you.
All right, are we ready? Good. We want everybody to be able to participate and ask questions, so good to work through it. All right, so tonight, a couple things that we want to accomplish here is to review the draft council goals. So we'll do a refresher of what's in there, and you should have had the summary report in your packet. One of the things that we talked about towards the end of the workshop was how to integrate partnerships where applicable. And so as we work through the goals tonight, if you have comments on partnerships, I'll try to pause after each one and ask about those, if you have input on that, so that we can provide that direction for staff as they move towards implementation of the goals. And then the last thing that we'll do is, not to throw more technology at you, you can do this from your handheld devices, so a phone, or a tablet, or whatever's convenient, but we're going to do a little prioritization exercise where it will be a live polling, and you'll be able to provide some additional input on your priorities and of both the actions that are accompanying each goal, as well as the overarching goals themselves. So that is our game plan for tonight. So starting out at the beginning, if you recall, we did our vision exercise early on in the workshop, and you guys had some great discussion about what's the direction we're headed over the next five years. And it was important to have this conversation so that we could set goals that align with that vision. So the vision that you guys came up with was Wilsonville is a clean, green, and safe community for all. And then through that visioning discussion, we also had some conversation around the values that will guide the team in implementing the goals. And so you have the full description of these values, because there was some pretty rich discussion around what these things mean. And so you have that available to you in the summary report. But just to recap for everyone, those values include diversity, equity, and inclusion, sustainability, or being sustainable, economic opportunity, the environment, and safety. And these, these values are meant to be the lens through which you implement all of the goals, and so they, they should be the guidance for both the council and staff as implementation moves forward. So prepared this summary graphic highlighting just the goals that we talked about. So there are seven in total, and we'll go through each one and see if there's any additional clarification needed or comments. And so, starting with the first one, which is attracting high-quality industry and economic opportunity to Wilsonville, that's the overarching goal. Listed below are some of the strategies that we talked about to help advance that goal. And so if there are any comments on these strategies, we'd love to hear, or questions, would love to be able to answer any of those, or receive any additional input from the council. If you guys feel comfortable with where these are, then we can have a quick conversation about partnerships, or where you see partnerships playing into these strategies, and, and move on to the next one. So that will be the process for moving through these.
I just wanted to ask if anyone, any of the other councillors wants to talk for an example of the partnership. Is that clear, what we're looking for here on these? So for example, as we're talking about a hike, just as we get going, I just want to make sure everybody's giving us that. So as we're starting on the goal number one, for example, would an example of conducting outreach, that's really more of a staff function, but it would, would it potentially be a group like Greater Portland, Inc.?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's a great example. So if there are organizations, I believe staff already has some organizations in mind when they...
So any that we just want to make sure to mention?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So any comments or questions about the strategies or actions listed under goal
So this is the time that you want us to give you names of partners that are...
We have specific ones in mind, yes.
Okay, all right. And it's probably not the last chance to mention them either, right?
No, you can, you can follow up after the meeting and get me if you have additional comments, or if you want to provide additional information, we'll have time to...
So saying like the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Portland, the Water Consortium...
Right.
Okay.
But if we do think of it, if somebody comes up with another one later, the door is not closed on that. Okay, good, thank you. Just, just because we have a lot to do in 45 minutes, I would just want to confirm we're not rushed on that.
Yes.
Do you guys have a list of like, a second, an easy one where we can say, here's the kind of the, these are the kind of almost given, established relationships that would fall under this umbrella? Do you have any other ideas?
Yeah, so like 1.1 for the workforce development, that would obviously involve Clackamas Community College, Clackamas County. Yeah, we have a list of known partners that we deal with.
So then we're not giving you, like, you're like, things already knew that, things, but yes.
Yeah, no, but it's good to hear what your thoughts are, too, because just because we think we have the list doesn't mean that you won't come up with someone that we haven't thought about.
Yeah.
But you have Oregon Tech on that list.
Oregon Tech, Clackamas Community College.
And the school district?
And, yes.
Because they've done some stuff with the Clackamas Community College.
Yeah, they do some STEM stuff as well, yes, yes.
So, oh, wait a second. So I'm, I'm, are we just using this?
I am just gonna, I think as the work session, we can, let's just...
It's like we're upstairs.
It goes back to the informal...
We're gonna, let's try to manage our informal giving each other terms.
Like we would as if we were upstairs.
Right.
Yeah. Is this a work session?
No.
This is the first, right?
Yeah, logistically speaking, we have to do it down here.
So I had a question on, on 1.5.
Yes.
What is the existing strategy?
So one of the comments that, if you recall, from the workshop was to have some additional discussion with council, and so staff has noted that as, as a, something else that's going to come forward to refresh the council on the existing strategy for recruitment and expansion, but you guys certainly have those in place. So I don't know if the city manager wants to elaborate on that right now.
Well, some of these goals also have other strategies and other things that connect to them, so the thing that we struggle with the most is how do we aggregate parcels? How do we help that parcel aggregation? So that's a strategy in our urban renewal update that we need to think about as we're moving forward. So that's just one example. Right now, we kind of rely on the city providing infrastructure, critical infrastructure, and, and then working with brokers to bring in people that, you know, fit into either Basalt or Coffee Creek, or one of the employment areas, or form-based code, and we work with them individually.
The, the one comment, or something comes to mind on 1.2, where it says leverage the Coffee Creek Urban Renewal District. I agree with that, but I don't, we don't want to limit our economic development to that area either, since we have other industries coming in other parts of the city.
Yeah, well, a good example of that is the Twist Bioscience. It's also in the agenda tonight. That's in an existing industrial area already, which is the Xerox campus. So that's correct. We're not just focused on bringing, you know, in new greenfield development, we're also looking at helping people in existing industrial areas either expand businesses that are here or attract new ones, and we do that with the state of Oregon and Clackamas County as well.
And so I'm going to presume that number, that 1.1 would, would include these areas outside of the industrial area, or outside of...
Yeah, I would see that as the entire city, and then the, and the urban renewal is a separate strategy, a separate issue altogether.
Or it could be subsumed in 1.5.
Yeah, if I can recall from the workshop, you guys included 1.2 because Coffee Creek was a priority, but wanting to also have the strategy 1.5 in there to make sure that all of your industrial areas were, were covered.
That's correct.
So, oh, sorry. I was using, the WIN program could go under 1.5.
Right.
I'm also remembering there was, and this is probably Jordan Vance's last or second-to-last meeting, that he was here with us...
In person.
In person. There was a presentation on that research project that was done, and there was a number of different organizations involved with that, and I don't remember all of them, but looking at different strategies, and I think that the, the land aggregation was one thing that was suggested in that, but I cannot remember all of the different entities from that, but that would be important to all of this work. There was a tremendous amount of material in that presentation.
That was a Metro grant.
Yes, but there was several...
Partners.
Kind of partners, entities that were part of that discussion and work, and, yeah. So any further clarifications, or do you guys feel good about this goal and the strategies as, as they're outlined?
Well, excuse me, I'm not usually eating while I'm talking in a meeting, but there was also discussion, remember, about the goal isn't to get as many businesses in as fast as we can.
Exactly.
And, and, and that's why I asked about 1.5, about the existing strategy, because having those properties available for expansion of places like Cisco is also important, and we have land use underlying strategies that have been in place since the beginning of the city for, to make sure that we don't, that there isn't undue pressure to let them go for any old thing.
Exactly.
Yeah, our comp plan is obviously in play as well. We're not looking for regional retail, so that's correct. We also have an economic development strategy that council adopted several years ago that, so there's a lot of different documents that go into...
So it sounds to me like the, the wording is very carefully chosen and accurate, where it says advance the existing strategy. So we're not departing, the existing strategy is important, because it's a very long-term...
It's just not really spelled out there, so intentionally so, but...
Okay, thank you for calling that out.
Yes, that, that was certainly the intent in crafting that wording, to make sure that it wasn't the development of a new strategy or steering from the course that's, that's been set. And we can, we can refine that and strengthen that language if that's, if, if that's important to the council. Okay. If there aren't any other comments on this first one, we can go ahead and move to goal number two, which is to support local business recovery post-pandemic. And there were two strategies under this one, which was convening the Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Development Center to assess local business needs and available resources, and then to develop programs for business support using ARPA funds.
So the Business Recovery Center is not named specifically in this strategy. It is, we have named the Chamber, and that is perhaps not a long-term entity, because it's funded by short-term funding.
Right.
But it's Clackamas County, I believe. Aren't those small business recovery, or the business recovery?
They provided the grant money, but they're providing it to chambers. Yeah. There's also some potential money coming in September from our legislative delegation at the state level in the form of, I don't know, it's like 1.2 million, I think was what I heard, split amongst three chambers of commerce to do something on number 2.2 there. And the city's also working with the chamber right now. The mayor and I had a conference call with Chamber Director, Kevin O'Malley, Frasher O'Malley, sorry. So we're also looking at what we could do when we receive our ARPA funds for business recovery as well. So there's a lot of different folks playing in this field right now. There's also state and federal grants available, so trying to get our hands around what the biggest need is, and what, what we can do with the money we're getting, so we get the biggest bang for the buck. So there's going to be a lot of conversation and dialogue around that.
So any comments, questions, or clarifications on, on these two? Is the council comfortable with how these have been crafted and feel like it reflects what you all discussed? Okay, great, we'll keep moving then. Goal number three is, the overarching goal is to increase mobility for all in Wilsonville, and our, some of the strategies that we discussed were pursuing a legislative strategy to support aligning the smart service boundaries with the city limits, leverage existing city funds to attract outside funding for the I-5 bike and pedestrian bridge, work with ODOT to incorporate the French Prairie Bridge crossing into the Boone Bridge project, and then advocate at the federal, state, and regional level to complete the Boone Bridge So those were some of the specifics. So again, same, same question here. You guys had a lot of conversation at the workshop, but if there's any additional clarification or questions, want to be able to address those now.
This question kind of goes back to, I know that we spoke about this during our retreat weekend, but the, the projects that are already in place that we assume will keep moving, like the Fifth Street, the old, you know, Old Town Fifth Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Fifth to Kinsman area. That's not called, called out specifically in this, but those projects that are increasing connectivity within the city are assumed to be continuing and moving forward. Is that, is that correct?
They sure are.
Good, okay.
So the fact they're not mentioned here doesn't mean we omitted them.
Right.
Yes.
Because we did like call out one of that, you know, the, one project, but not another project, so I was just curious on that.
It, it does kind of beg the question, though, why we wouldn't say, like we just did on 2.5, no, on 1.5, something about...
Advance existing strategies?
Existing strategies, to continue with existing strategies. And, and where this seemed confusing was on some of the, the letters that we received about Frog Pond that said, well, how can you do this with, because traffic is bad, it's going to get worse and worse and worse? Well, no, we have the Fifth Street going, we have this going, we have this, every time we add, add development, we add road capacity. I mean...
And we continue with our policy for concurrency planning.
For concurrency on traffic. So, so they, they, development triggers automatically, it's already built into the system, that development triggers transportation improvements. It's not like now we're done with the roads and everything we add from here is going to just be, cause a big mess.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, Councillor Aquavale and Councillor Leehan, because we don't want any citizens to pick up a comment that's incorrect that somebody says and think that's the case, and so, or think it's missing because it's not on here. So if we add a statement similar to 1.5, I don't know that we need to do it for goal two, because it's more of a situational, that one seems correct, but if we, or, or it could be an overarching statement at the beginning of this, so this is not 45 pages long. But I, I hear what you're saying, we don't want it to appear to be omitted.
Yeah, so that's a great suggestion, and we can certainly add some language to the beginning to provide context before people read through the goals, so that there's clear understanding that this isn't the, the only document that guides the city. You guys have other planning documents in place that outline specific projects that will continue, that will continue on, and are not, are still very much part of the organization's work plan.
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to add some just general language that will continue to build out our local network, it would include no mobility for all, or something to that effect, multimodal, I think that would be fine. That would catch the project that Councillor Leehan or Councillor Aquavale mentioned.
Is that, is that all part of the TSP?
It is.
And so if we reference the TSP and updates and review as needed to address current and future projects?
We can, we can, we can include language about the TSP. I mean, we're mandated to make sure our projects are multimodal anyway, so we can figure out some creative language, just so that people don't look at this and say, well, that's all they're worried about is these bridge projects, so I understand what you're saying. So let us figure out some creative writing, and we'll, we'll get it in there.
Any other comments on goal three?
That sounds good.
Okay.
I want to, could we break for a minute, please, before we go forward? I wanted to ask, are we going to talk about our council protocols and our agreement, council agreements at this meeting?
At the, I think you intended to at the end.
We can, we can touch on that at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we, we remember what's in our council protocol manuals about electronic devices at meetings. We, we may use the, the phone to vote, but we're not going to use our electronic devices for outside communication.
Yes, we will touch, we can touch on that at the end.
Thank you.
So goal four, the next one, is align infrastructure plans with sustainable financing sources. So we had a lot of conversation around this goal, and staff, worked with the staff team to help refine these strategies. So one of the strategies would be to update the urban renewal strategic plan. Another one is to establish the Arts and Culture Board and fund a feasibility study for a performing arts facility. And then the last one is to conduct a financial analysis to explore cost and revenue options to fund the city's major infrastructure projects that are currently without available funding. And so this was the, one of the biggest ones, because we talked about all of these infrastructure needs, and you guys have done so much master planning, and now it's, it's trying to figure out how to align revenue sources to help put some of those plans into action, so...
Specifically, the projects that don't have any identified funding source.
Right. So this, this is goal four, and happy to answer any questions or offer any clarifications?
The city manager brings up a point there. Maybe it's the word available is not the right word. It's identifiable or something, because a lot of funding comes on the heels of development through SDCs and whatnot, so that's identified...
I think that's correct. It's not available.
It's not available until the, until a property develops, but, but so that it's not available right now is of, is a, is inconsequential if you, if it's identified where it's going to be coming from, when it is needed.
I do think that's a better word.
Okay, I noted that, so we can make that...
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think that's correct.
If the rest of the council supports that, we can certainly make that change.
I support that.
That's great.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, let's, let's keep moving. Oh, sorry.
Well, I've, I've forgotten the partnerships piece, and so now I'm remembering that again, and partners that come to my mind, obviously, would be the, the Urban Renewal Task Force, probably.
We probably have to reconstitute that, because they haven't really met, and the membership kind of dwindled, so we'll probably have to reconstitute it.
Yeah. I think they met with the development of the WIN program, but that was a while ago now.
It was a skeleton crew compared to what we had in the beginning.
That was like a year and a half, yeah. And then, oh, what was my second one?
Arts and Culture?
It'll come to me, yeah.
We, we have a whole list of partners that helped us put together that plan, so that's pretty well baked into the plan that you adopted, so...
And the, there was the task force looking at the Parks Bond, which some of that, you know, touches on these projects that we're looking at and funding sources for.
Yeah, that would be part of the strategic plan for unidentified funding sources.
Yeah, okay. Just trying to remember the partners piece. Okay, keep that going.
And, and we could reconvene that task force easily if council decided that one, you want to go for a bond.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
This is a minor thing, but on 5.2, it'd be good to spell out TOD.
Oh, on the next one, okay.
Transit-oriented development.
We haven't gotten there yet.
You're ahead of the rest, sorry. You're ahead of the rest, sorry.
I've got that noted, thank you. Were there any other questions or comments on Goal Four? Okay, not seeing any. On Goal Five, this one, overarching goal is to expand homeownership for lower income levels and first-time homebuyers. And so you guys were very specific in your conversations around this. You have a, an equitable strategic housing plan that calls out many strategies, but one thing that was really important to the group to advance was homeownership for this lower income level and first-time homebuyers. So some of the strategies that have been included under this are to continue the implementation of that strategic housing plan, develop the concept plan zoning strategy, public outreach, identify partners, pursue grant funding, and develop a draft agreement for a transit-oriented development project at the West Transit Center site. And then the last one is to explore examples of other programs to support homeownership for low-income residents and first-time homebuyers as part of the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan.
Could you add Clackamas County Housing Authority as a potential partner there?
On 5.3?
Yeah.
Got it.
Looking to come up with some kind of a plan for first-time homebuyers, we wouldn't, we obviously don't have a housing authority in Wilsonville, so we'd have to partner with somebody to run that program for us.
Okay, I've got that one noted. Any other questions, comments, thoughts on partnerships from the council?
Well, we've named a lot of potential partners in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan.
Yeah, so we can, I'll put a note in there of just referencing those partners that are named there. Okay.
And I think Habitat for Humanity's been mentioned, but let's just make sure that's in there too.
Okay.
And we had a task force, of course, for the original creation of the Equable.
Correct. So a lot of the players will be already in that plan.
Okay. All right, any others? All right, the next one, Goal Six, is to protect Wilsonville's environment and increase access to sustainable lifestyle choices. And the strategies discussed that would support that goal are to participate in the Aurora State Airport planning discussions to represent Wilsonville's environmental interests, to update the city's comprehensive plan to include a section on the environmental impacts of the airport. 6.3, explore options to expand access to urban gardening and other sustainable lifestyle choices. And 6.4, develop a Wilsonville Climate Action Strategy in alignment with Clackamas County's planning efforts. So four strategies there. Any comments, questions, clarifications?
I feel like I'm like a broken record here, but I think about like the things that are already underway, like the urban forest plan, right, or that work that's already kind of going on. Does that need to be called out in any way, or like continuation in the plans that we've had in place to also reduce the...
Pesticides.
Yes, pesticides, things like that. Is it another bullet that's like...
Stuff we're doing already.
Yeah, continuation of efforts in these areas.
Absolutely, we can do a similar statement like we did on that 1.5.
The ice storm has kind of shifted our, the urban forestry thing to take another look at the work we just had done.
Talking about the tree inventory?
Tree inventory, and reassess that for, you know, better species, not so good a species, that sort of thing. So that's kind of underway, but we haven't really started it.
You know, for another idea, I know we keep coming back to the same topic, it's okay. There was another way that we addressed this topic of, for example, the Transportation System Plan that Council Linville mentioned. If you look at 5.1, it says continue implementation of the city's Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. So if there's one big overriding document or something like that, that could we say continue implementation of with some of those things? And we may even say that on Goal Three about the Transportation System Plan. Might just be a shorthand way to capture some of it.
I just think some clarifying language about stuff that we're already doing is what I hear you saying. And we can add that to the sections that need it.
I think we can add it to the sections that need it, and we can also add it in a statement in the beginning. Yes, a global statement, so that it's clear that other work continues.
And we can even name some of the projects or plans that we're working on right now in that statement, I think.
Absolutely. Okay, any other comments, questions on the items on Goal Six? Okay, last one then, before we get into...
Oh.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I feel like I'm taking up a lot of, I'm sorry. So partners for Goal Six, right? I think about Republic Services, right? Because they have done several different pilot projects in the last two years that we probably need to reconvene on. Yeah, and the Styrofoam, the light recycling, light bulb. Right? Yeah.
The streetlights, is it? Are you talking about streetlights?
No, I'm talking about the...
She's talking about the tube lights.
Yeah.
A lot of industrial folks.
That was a pilot program.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Recycling those, so they don't end up in the landfill.
That's commercial.
Right, so Republic Services as a partner, any others?
PGE, I think, because with our green energy, and we don't talk about that in terms of getting to... I mean, we've got another, what, eight years, I think, in that plan before we get to what our goal was going to be.
You're thinking about for a full buildout of LED?
No, I'm talking about our green energy.
Oh, the green energy, yeah, it's a while, I don't know the exact date.
Okay. Okay, we're moving along on, and if we have other partners that are thought of for this, please send them to the city manager.
Yes.
All right, so then Goal Seven, the last one, is to engage the community to support emergency preparedness and resiliency. So again, this one felt very relevant coming out of the last year with lots of emergencies and lots of resiliency displayed. But a couple of the strategies here are to work with the emergency response providers to identify gaps and enhance Wilsonville's emergency preparedness planning for all types of emergencies and disasters. And then the second one is to connect with the community, including residents and businesses, connect them with emergency response resources and educational materials to improve individuals' response planning efforts, so...
I did have a partner to add there, which sounds really obvious, but I've just been in probably two or three different meetings with Clackamas County and also Clackamas County mayors talking about, and I'm sure that our emergency coordinator is in a lot of meetings about this. But perhaps there is a, you know, just some shared cooperative emergency response tools that we can take advantage of too.
We can mention all of our 190 agreements that we have with our neighboring cities and county government for emergency response and some other things as well. We're all part of the same conversations and regional groups.
Okay, I've got those noted. Any other comments or questions?
Specific to the 7.2, the Regional Water Provider Consortium has a lot of, it seems like, little media pieces and things like that that could be used for the public education. So we don't have to recreate materials that already exist and are available to us.
Got that noted as well, thank you.
Well, and the only other one that I guess I might mention is Marion County because for the people that are on the south side of the river, Marion County needs, may need to be engaged in emergency preparedness for that group or also Wilsonville citizens.
Okay, excellent. You guys ready to prioritize?
Yes.
Okay. So we briefly talked about this at the workshop. We've used this tool with the Parks Task Force. I think you guys will enjoy it. I've used it with other councils. And they find it easy to use, but the first thing is to just get logged on to it. And so it's a tool called Mentimeter. And so I've put the web domain here up on the screen. You can also just go to www.menti.com and it'll ask you for a code, and you can put that code in. So if you want to take a moment, again, you can do this from your phone, you can do it from a tablet, if you have a laptop in front of you, whatever is most convenient. And I will pull up the...
It just disappeared.
I'm going to pull it up somewhere else so that you can see it. So there's your code. We have a practice question.
Can you read it?
No, I have a problem.
Too tiny?
Okay, let me go back to the other one.
Andy? Tech Support.
Who's this?
Where'd it go?
We start answering these questions?
Here, I'm going to pull it up.
Maybe I don't.
Oh, she's in.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
There it is in big.
I was getting all kinds of messages about the city of Wilsonville managing all my accounts.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
So we want to type it in with this extension.
Either, whatever seems easier for you. You can type it with the extension, or you can type menti.com and enter the code.
Okay, right.
Should it start with what is your favorite park or outdoor space?
Yeah, I have a practice question to kick us off to make sure everybody gets logged on. So if you, if that's the question you see coming up, you are in the right place.
I think mine's working. Do you have an answer?
Yes, as soon as I switch back, I want to make sure everybody has the code before, I don't want it to get too small. Is everybody in?
Yes.
Yep, I'm in.
All right, great. Let me go back to...
And I am, I just want...
So we already have some people who are, I can see two of you have already entered your responses. So this first question is just a practice question. So what is your favorite park or outdoor space in Wilsonville? And I just want to make sure that everybody can get it and use the system before we move ahead in the polling.
City park or regional park?
Grandma's. That's my favorite park, but...
Favorite park outside of Wilsonville.
I know I've got four of you, so just one more.
Kind of a city manager, isn't it?
Yellow stone.
Has everybody submitted their answer?
Yes.
No, a little bit, little bit slow.
I just want to check in with you on the timing.
Yes.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Are you talking about for this item on the agenda? Yeah. Should be okay.
Once we get rolling, this should go quickly. Okay. All right, so I can see everybody's in. Some good recommendations for outdoor spaces. Okay, so now the first one, we'll focus on Goal One. And if you can just rank these actions, for the number one being the highest priority for you.
Wait a second.
And again, this exercise gives staff some direction as they think about how to build the work plan around these and how, and what order to implement them in. They'll obviously consider the council's input alongside available resources and staffing resources.
On my phone, it's not scrolling.
What number two and three are, I thought?
It correlates directly with what's in the summary report too.
Are we supposed to select a...
I don't know why we...
I don't have any scroll down.
1.1 or 1.4 or 1.3 or...
Yeah, so what, so...
Oh, I see, it's really, it's down there. That was in the fine point, okay.
So if your highest priority is to can be, to leverage the Coffee Creek Urban Renewal District, you would select that one first.
Okay.
That's, and that would be your number one.
Okay.
And then that option should eliminate as you move down the list to... Yes, and these will all be the same from here on out, so...
Until we've clicked through them all.
Yes. So while this first one might take a minute, the rest of them will all be the same process.
So we're ranking them?
You're ranking them. And again, the purpose is to give staff some additional direction on what the council's highest priorities are. And then once you have them ranked, go ahead and hit submit.
Oh, we have to choose them all?
Yes, you'll have to choose all of them. All right, we've got everybody in, so then...
See, that's very tiny stuff there.
Yes, it is very tiny up there. So then the next one, if you can rank, go ahead and rank these two for Goal Two, support local business recovery post-pandemic. All right, we've got everybody in there. The next one is to increase mobility for all in Wilsonville, so if you can rank these actions.
Is there a 3.5 in this one that you added that had to do with...
The advancing the existing?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, so that one would not be in here, but that, again, you can rank it against these, but that would be kind of continuing on with. Since I built it ahead of time, not knowing we were going to add extras, but... Just waiting on a few more. Okay. Got everybody here. I'll be able to show you the results at the end. For some of them, it's showing up live, and for others, it's not for some reason. So I'll make sure we highlight that at the end. So the next one is Goal Four, if we can go ahead and rank these actions. Just waiting on one more. Okay. The next one is Goal Five. The next one is goal five. Just waiting for one more. Okay, got everybody on this one. Goal six. Okay, just waiting on that last middle. All right, great. And then last one here. Could rank these two on emergency preparedness.
What's what?
Okay, we've got all these. And then the last one I'll have you guys do is just to rank all of the goals, all seven.
I need those.
And as you guys are finishing your voting on this, we will revise the document and the numbers of the goals to reflect the input that you've shared tonight for these priorities.
So like instead of goal one, it'll be a new goal or whatever.
Tonight, I put that, I had sent them numbered just so we could easily reference them, but we'll make sure that it's aligned. The goal numbers are aligned with the priorities that the council expressed.
I see.
And now, we are getting close to the allotted time.
Yes, we're waiting on the last one here.
On the five-minute call now.
All right. We've got our results. I will also, I'll share these results with, with the staff so they can send them out to you as well. You can have these slides. The last thing just would be to, if there's any comments on the team agreement. So on page 15 of your report, we had some discussion with both the staff and then just with the council as far as the rules, expectations and team agreement. And on that page, it, there's a graphic that describes the council's role as well as administration's role and the expectations that you all shared. And then the city council came up with their team agreement with four main components focused on just all perspectives being valued, establishing trust, so committed to building and maintaining trust amongst the team, respecting the decision-making process and assuming positive intent. And again, this agreement, agreement is just meant to help this team serve as a high-performing team to make sure that you can advance all seven of these goals and the supporting strategies that you've outlined. It's recommended that you check in with your agreement from time to time and even use it throughout the meeting to make sure that you guys continue to, to move forward and achieve the things that you'd like to achieve. So if there's any comments, questions or clarifications on that, please let me know.
This is, this is different than the, the rules in the council protocol manual. This is meant to buttress those.
Exactly.
It's how you treat one another in, inside and outside of meetings. But you still have your meeting decorum rules that are in the council protocol manual.
Exactly.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to work with the council. I will take these comments and refine the doc, the draft document and incorporate all of them, them in there. And then we'll get it back to you guys to, to post and share with the community.
All right. We'll look forward to hearing from you.
Excellent. Brian, anything else?
I think we're good. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, everyone, for participating. And to keep us on schedule, as we say goodbye to Sarah for her drive home, we will welcome Dan Polly, staff member of City of Wilsonville, to talk about the Middle Housing in Wilsonville project.
Sure. Good evening, council. And as I bring up a presentation here, I just want to acknowledge all the feedback we've gotten on this project to date, our public outreach and in comments we've received. We, I mean, this is something people care about and there's some strong opinions on both sides. And we've, and those have, I think, been understood throughout this process and doing our best to balance everything and incorporate those different points of view consistent with things that the city council has adopted in the past. All right, and also wanted to acknowledge, they're not with us this evening in the short work session, but all the work that Angelo Planning Group has done to, and as well as their sub consultants to assist us with this project. So tonight, I wanted to cover two things. First of all, talk about some draft code and plan updates, kind of the first of a couple of packages of these. And with our limited time tonight, I'm just going to touch on highlights and kind of some major themes of this. And happy to sit down with councillors one-on-one to talk about any details or take any detailed comments through email to incorporate. So happy to continue that conversation with each of you offline as, as you would like. Then second is talking about this requirement that's come to surface with Planning Commission about, in addition to allowing to, to require a portion of that allowance in Frog Pond West. So I'll touch on that and want to focus on that as looking for some policy direction from council so we can take that policy direction, incorporate it into our draft edits to the code. So before jumping in, again, the desired project outcomes, I want to remind you of this that we've talked about before, reflective of council goals. Thoughtful, inclusive built environment. House Bill 2001 compliance, we'll talk a lot about that tonight. Meeting the variety of housing needs. The outreach we've had, it's been a really neat experience to experience that. Some of these outreach meetings we've had as part of this project have been really, really rewarding. Infrastructure to support middle housing, including roads and providing for traffic. Make sure the standards are usable and also looking at parking congestion. Obviously, when things like this are changing, we're thinking about parking as well. So tonight, the key focus are on what, so to help digest this, we've broken it down into four categories and tried to color code it. It's a lot, so try to make it as digestible as possible. Tonight, we're going to focus mainly on these first two categories, which are requirements from the state without a lot of local discretion. And category one is state, are very direct. Category two are more indirect in a way that they're required by the state, but it's really in terms of feasibility, that if you didn't change it, it'd have the effect of disallowing middle housing, so it's not allowed. And then we have a few minor category three and four things that council and Planning Commission have discussed previously that's included in this packet. So the main kind of themes of, or drivers of the required updates are defining what these middle housing terms are. What this, this term that hasn't been used a lot historically, which again are kind of two categories, multiple units, up to about four units on a lot, but also housing units that are attached at the property line. Establish, make sure those are established as allowed use in all residential zones, where we also allow single-family detached. That's a requirement of the state law. Making sure the review process for middle housing is the same as detached single-family, which again is a requirement. Incorporating these density exemptions for middle housing. And I'll, I'll, I'll pause and explain more of that in a couple of slides. Also incorporating some specific standards related to lot size and design standards, height limits, setbacks, things like that, that are specifically spelled out in the state and the state rules and statute. We've also, Wilsonville's a city of planned development, so we've had to address how planned development approvals that have occurred in the past relate to these new rules. So that's incorporated. And also incorporating these, the concepts from other housing policy updates, such as the Equil Housing Strategic Plan. Middle housing terms is, this is a really important foundational piece, defining what a triplex, a quadplex is. What the, we call it cluster housing, which are essentially detached triplexes, duplexes and triplexes. Defining what a cottage cluster is. Using some terms, there's other kind of related terms that we've introduced into the code to make sure that as we regulate these things, that it's clear what we're regulating. This density exemption is really pushed by the state that it changes how we have to think about maximum density in our residential zones. Density's always been used by a lot of jurisdictions to really control and zone different types of residential. So we have to start using some different tools, such as lot size and setbacks and things like that, which, those tools are available to us, but we need to be more thoughtful about those. Because per state law, similar to how it exists today for accessory dwelling units, these middle housing types such as duplexes and triplexes don't count towards density. So whether you have one unit on the lot or three, it counts the same towards the density maximums, and that's a direct requirement of the state law. Still, we have, we do have, again, that minimum lot size tool and some other tools that will control particularly the perceived density, the look and the fill of neighborhoods. And so that's really, in this project, we've turned to the focus of the look and fill, where we can't regulate some of the numeric stuff like we have in the past, but we can still regulate how the neighborhoods look and feel, how far houses are apart from each other, things like that. Townhouses have their unique rules. Essentially making them equivalent of a quadplex in terms of the amount that can be allowed on a lot. And from there, I wanted to go to this theme of, really, we've heard through the outreach and, and understandable. I think everyone we've talked to kind of agrees with this concept that there's been a lot of great planning that's happened in Wilsonville, a lot of thoughtful planning that's happened, both in our neighborhood plans, master plans and broader. And that we want to be consistent with that. We want to honor those plans and respect all that planning that's happened. We certainly heard that in terms of Old Town and Frog Pond, as we talked to neighbors there. And so as we looked at needing to update some of these things, we started from that place and looked at doing the minimal changes from those that comply with state law and also don't conflict with the Equil Housing Strategic Plan and, and further those specific action items in, in the Equil Housing Strategic Plan. So the Old Town, a big one we had to reach into is the Old Town Design Standards. We've updated those to apply to middle housing as they apply to single-family homes today. With some minor changes to just make them function better, to address some design issues that don't really exist for single-family homes, but would for, for middle housing. And so we're confident on how those are going to function for the limited amount of infill that may, may occur in Old Town. Also for Old Town, we needed to update the neighborhood plan from 2011 to really reflect these new realities and the new state laws, but still keep that spirit and the intent of, of that neighborhood plan. Vileball, we also updated, we haven't talked about it much because really in reality, there's not much of, especially in a short to midterm, any impact since all the single-family residential out there has been approved. The last subdivisions are just getting started on construction. It does change to allow redevelopment of these lots into middle housing in the future. We don't anticipate that happening at a broad scale anytime soon, just from a market perspective. But that, but both the code and the master plan's been updated to, to reflect that state requirement. Similarly, Frog Pond West, we've also updated it. Frog Pond West is a little different in that just because of where it is in development, some of these changes will have a more noticeable potential on-the-ground impact. But still, as, if you listen to what the Planning Commission, as they talked about this, really that focus again of respecting that 2017 master plan. And really, as we talk about this requirement that the state has to increase the density from six and a half to eight dwelling units per acre, really that, what that enables is for the city to continue to use the master plan and not have to default to actually a higher density and more broader allowance of middle housing that would actually move away from that master plan as a state mandate. So really increasing it from six and a half to eight units per acre enable us to keep that look and fill of the 2017 master plan while accommodating both the state law and the Equil Housing Strategic Plan. So some ways that specifically that happens, we're keeping the lot sizes the same, except for a couple of circumstances that are directly required by the state. We're keeping the allowed unit types substantially the same. There's a lot of discussion with us on Planning Commission, keeping it as kind of the two units. Primarily, there was discussion that three units can be built in kind of that similar urban form. And also from a practical standpoint, when you start doing math, you end up with odd numbers, so you need to allow some triplexes just so the math works. And so triplexes would be limited to corner lots, but other than that, it's the same type of units that are allowed there today. And then it's, it's helpful, I think, in understanding what we're talking about here. We're, the state mandate is all about an allowance. So think of it like, you know, a cup of your favorite beverage, a cup of water. And so this, this discussion about a requirement is not, is not pouring more water into that cup, which I think there's been some misunderstandings in the community that that's what this does. It really is asking the developers to actually drink some of the water that's already in the cup under the state requirements. So and looking at that as a spectrum kind of illustrates. So the, the whole cup essentially would allow about 138 additional units. And the existing limited requirement for middle housing, probably if any, maybe up to four, depending on how timing is with, when these applications come in, it may be none. none. And so the PC thought, well, you know, really get into that variety while understanding that we can still keep this look and fill of the original master plan, that having a certain amount would provide that opportunity for additional ownership opportunities in Frog Pond West. So their recommendation landed on this 10%, which would lead to about 30 units across this area, which we're talking, you know, about a little less than 300 units left to be kind of planned out there. And that is reflective of an actual requirement in the master plan, where the small lot sub-districts are required today and have been since 2017 to have 10% of these attached or duplexes, which there's been a number, some more under construction. So that expands to these remaining sub-districts. But again, it's that level that the planning commission felt it balanced allowing and ensuring we get some variety, but at the same time, keeping that look and the fill and kind of of the master plan the same. So we also talked about a 15% option, but really that 10% is, if you listen to their conversation, as linked in the staff report, you know, they articulated pretty well why that is their recommendation. So happy to answer any questions or add any additional clarifications that you would like.
I have a clarification question. You mentioned, and it's referenced on page five, that the 10% recognition of middle housing on the remaining lots that are not built would be 30 houses in Frog Pond West. Amount about that. You also referenced 138 additional houses. Can you clarify what you were referring to there?
So 138 is that full cup of water we were talking, that I referenced. It's the whole cup. It's what's allowed. What is the potential that someone could drink or use up?
For the entire area?
For the entire remaining area, right.
So if it had not been built yet, if we were starting from ground, from the beginning?
Or it'd be that, I mean, we think about it as, from a compliance standpoint, as the entire master plan, but we have to allow that 138 in what remains in order to balance out eight dwelling units per acre across the area, because much of the area that's been built is less than eight. So we have to increase the allowance in those remaining areas, so it averages out to eight. But again, that's an allowance versus the 30 is, you know, 30 out of that 138, which would be required. And with that, so in terms of traffic, things like that, the infrastructure is already being planned for the potential of that 138. And so a 30, it doesn't add to that demand per se, because we're already planning for that.
So if the builders and the market wanted to build and there was demand for 138, it could be done?
It could be done.
But all that you're talking about in this report and the planning commission is 30?
30 would be required to be done.
Of the required. There still could be people who want to build them yet.
Yeah. The market could decide to do more.
So if I could ask a question that follows up on what the mayor was asking. So this becomes permissive rather than required. Is that correct? So the 30 is required. The, anything above that, if it was submitted by a developer, would need to be approved, correct? Because it falls within that guideline.
Yes.
But if it was never submitted, then it wouldn't happen?
Correct.
Okay.
So the idea is if the developers, which are primarily single-family focused, that are active out there, you know, if they chose not to, then nothing would happen?
Right. So the city would not go back to that developer and say, oh, no, no, you have to put more houses in there in order to, and it's once we get to the threshold of the 30, which is state mandated?
No, the 30 isn't state mandated. So let me step back here. The 130, allowing the 138 is mandated by the state to avoid allowing even more, right? So the 30 is, the planning commission felt a reasonable amount to ensure that some of our other local goals are met.
That's a recommendation from the planning commission.
Recommendation from planning commission.
To the city council.
To the city council for your consideration. So I mean, in the end, you can accept that recommendation, or we can just allow. It's really up to you.
Are we over in discussion?
Right. We're just leaving, you know, leaving time for a quick one.
Yeah. So I think when I listened to the planning commission, they even admitted that this would be a change from a robust public process that already took place on a previous council that Mayor Fitzgerald was a part of, when they, you guys master-planned Frog Pond West. Is that right? This would be a change from that original commitment?
It honors that original commitment by also, while also honoring the equitable housing strategic plan, is the way I understood the planning commission's discussion.
So I chaired the strategic housing plan, and then I carried the motion, but it was never clear to me that it was a mandate to go back on previous public processes that hundreds and hundreds of citizens participated in?
What they've recognized is that the, what the planning commission, in my words, what they were saying is that they respect that and they think they can do this, while the end result will look substantially the same. You're still going to have the look and fill and function of the Frog Pond master plan while ensuring that there's some more purchasing options for middle-income individual and households.
So another point of clarification regarding House Bill 2001. So as I understand it, House Bill 2001 requires that all master plans be updated to comply with House Bill 2001.
Correct.
And if there's not a master plan yet, I mean, it's something in the future, of course, that master plan would comply with House Bill 2001.
Correct.
And so all neighborhoods which have master plans will be, are being looked at to see if they, what needs to be done to comply with 2001, House Bill 2001.
That's correct.
And so the planning commission has looked at this and also has reviewed the equitable housing strategic plan, and in the context of both of those, has recommended that while we know that House Bill 2001 would allow builders to build as many as 138. And by the way, to do that, to recognize what is required with 2008 by noting that we have to allow these 138, what is needed to be done to the master plan? What is the step required for that? That's what we're doing right now?
Yeah, so we'll actually bring the text of the master plan and residential neighborhood zone that reflects the initial recommendation from council and the next work session in July. We're taking that to planning commission here upcoming. And so ultimately, you'll need to adopt it as a part of the ordinance. But essentially, we'd add some footnotes to the tables and things to reflect that requirement is how it really would look on here.
That we are allowed, that we are required to allow that.
Right.
Am I correct, though? We are going above and beyond what the landmark House Bill 2001, it was a landmark bill. I mean, it was a big, big deal. It was, I believe, the first of its kind in the country, and it was controversial at the time when we just passed it. And so that impacts a lot of our residents now. And so now going, we're considering, after we just went through a long public process, mandating more homes than was already required or would be potentially, we're mandating a portion more. So we have House, but we're layering on top of House Bill 2001, right?
No. You're talking, again, going back to the cup analogy, you're talking about like pouring more water into the cup. You know, you have the water from, the capacity from HB 2001 and pouring more into that. That's not what we're doing. We're just saying that developers actually have to use some of that water that's sitting in the cup already.
If the developers wanted to, they could drink the whole cup, and that would have built in 138 additional lots.
Correct. Well, units, not lots.
Was that giving the competing policy objectives that the city council has adopted with the equitable strategic plan, they're recommending an additional 30-some lots?
As required.
Yes, as required.
But they're not required now. We could go up to 138. We could, they could maybe, but out of that, we're still going to, we're going to require, they don't have to go to 138. No one's going to require that. That's a huge increase. But we are going to say in our ordinances that you do have to go this 10% more, period. You don't, you no longer have flexibility on that 10%. Like, we're mandating that. That's our mandate on top of House Bill 2001. Am I understood right?
Not on top of.
Well, House Bill 2001 doesn't mandate the extra 10%. That's our choice now. So if we mandate it, we're mandating that we're taking that choice from the market and saying, as a city, we want you to do 10% more.
No, not more.
Mandate is not a good choice of term.
Well, I mean, what is it? If we pass this thing, it says we want 30 more houses here, we're not, we're taking that from the market. We're saying, in this neighborhood, we want it to be this, and we want to be 30 more houses. So I don't know if I'm misunderstanding. Please tell me if I am, but that's how it seems.
I think we gotta be careful with saying "on top of" because it's essentially taking "part of." It's not "on top of."
But now a builder doesn't have to. They can just say, we're going to keep to the original master plan. We like it. We're not adding an additional 30 homes. If we vote for this, or we move this forward, we would say, no, that's changed. Now it's 30 more homes. So right now, there is no mandate to say, to 138, but we're basically saying, we mandate 30, that means you have 108 more if you want to. Yeah. So we are mandating.
Well, yeah, but not the 138.
We're mandating 30, so we're mandating a portion of it. So that's how it's on top of House Bill 2001.
It's not on top of.
Well, if we, if we mandate it, it is, because right now, a builder does not have to choose to make it that dense. The market can decide it.
Yeah, I think you're understanding it correctly, but I just caution, some of those words have been confusing to the community. So that it's really, that it's not adding, you know, so it's not adding more trips to the plan system or anything like that. It's using some of the allowance.
The infrastructure there is support up to the 138.
Right.
But that's not what was previously agreed upon before House Bill 2001, so we're not doing the best we can to that previous commitment as a council or as a planning commission yet.
And I think that's what the planning discussion, the planning commission was all about, was, okay, that was then. Since that time, these things have happened, including the equitable strategic plan. So I think that's the point the planning commission was struggling with.
And so I know you keep using my name. I'm looking at doing all the best as well. And so with you leading the equitable strategic housing plan and voting for it, it doesn't really matter who led the motion. It's, everyone voted for it also. And what that discussed is the fact that all of these discussions that, in statistics that are in the equitable strategic housing plan that was adopted last summer, that say things like, the number of people who can even get into a house now continues to decrease. Many are people, you know, the, some of the comments we have here, affordable homeownership is a challenge, we're continuing to have fewer and fewer opportunities for people to buy a house. And so this is coming from that long discussion with the community. Yes, community members also participated in many different ways. And they also said, through your work with the equitable strategic housing plan, we want to, and I'm paraphrasing it, find more ways for some people who could not afford, these are not affordable, it's not affordable housing, that's a different thing. Are there some ways that we could include some housing for some people who could buy at a somewhat lower rate? And so yes, there's Frog Pond East, there's Frog Pond South, and we're looking at Frog Pond West. And so that's what this is, is it looks like the planning commission, I listened to their discussion as well, and they said, well, and I agree, they think we don't need to, they looked at the 15%, and that would amount to 45 required houses. So going down to 10% is 30 houses that would be available to 30 families who wouldn't be able to, you know, be at a lower entry price to homeownership. And that's what came out of that discussion with all those citizens there as well.
Yeah, I was a part of that.
I know.
I also have an extensive background. I have established and ran hundreds of first-time home buying programs previously in my banking career. I am completely aware of all the different great programs out there that are available to help people get into homes. Many of the situation, we find ourselves in the current situation, we do, because of really poor policies over the last few decades that have made the greater Portland area that much more expensive. And I, and I think we can do a lot going into the other portions of Frog Ponds that have been master-developed, get our master plan, yeah, like Frog Pond East and those portions. However, I think that there was great compromise made not that long ago on that previous council. And I only brought it up, Mayor, because you did sit on that council and were a part of that process. And I think that we have to really remember that. And this recent House Bill 2001, or the strategic housing plan, which I was really happy to chair, that is not a mandate or some type of opportunity for us to go back and to not remember that process that we just went through. I mean, you can, you can look dumbfounded at me, but that's how I feel about it.
Could I ask a question? And I know that this is, I mean, I wish I was asking you the question, but I need to ask Council West the question. And so I'm wondering, what is the primary concern that you have about, I mean, what's driving your concern about adding 30 houses to Frog Pond West?
Well, like I said previously, is that there was great compromise regarding the density of Frog Pond West previously with that previous council. And there were a petition of over 500 people signed. There was people that came to the meetings and really interacted with the council. I was newer to the community at that time, but I do remember it. I wasn't on the council at that time, neither were you, Council Linville. But I know that compromise was made. And we really seemed to stress process so much on this council, and that was a really robust process. And it wasn't about having a certain look about your community or being exclusionary in any way. Wilsonville's an incredibly inclusive and welcoming and wonderful community. And I think that those people and those neighbors that invested all that time and energy and spoke, and spoke their minds and spoke what they, how they wanted their community to be, that should be remembered. And if we can adhere to that the best we can, then we should honor that commitment. And so that's kind of where my concern is, is somewhat it's principled and somewhat is that compromise has already been made previously.
And I guess I ask you that because we've made decisions that relate to Old Town, where we've gone back and made changes in the Old Town plan, and it hasn't been to this degree of concern. I mean, it's not like the city has not, in compliance with some of the rules, you know, gone back and made some decisions. Otherwise, I mean, this is not, this isn't the first time ever that a master plan has been updated or changed, correct?
Correct.
But we're, this also includes Old Town, too. We're not going to do necessarily the extra, the 10%, right?
The other, excuse me, Council West, I do want to let the other councilors have a chance to speak.
I don't know if you can answer that really quick for me, though. This also, we talked about not doing the additional 10% in Old Town.
Well, quickly, I mean, because Old Town has to allow everything anyway, right? So, I mean, everything that the state requires has to be allowed in Old Town. By all, there's really no options in Old Town.
There are no neighbors, neighborhoods that are exempt from this bill.
There are no, there's some special provisions that gives the city more flexibility for Frog Pond West that leads to this conversation. We're not talking about the rest of the neighborhoods like Old Town, because that option doesn't exist.
Okay.
And I do want to say one thing about the petition you bring up. That petition brought up, stated something about apartments. There are no apartments planned, and I'm not sure if you know what your And I'm not sure if you know what you're referring to with the compromise.
It was still part of the compromise process, though.
There are no apartments, and that was a six-year-old petition that Doris Whaler recently sent back in. I don't know if we wanna, all of those people are talking about this. That was six years old. There are no apartments.
In that whole process, that came to the conclusion and the commitment that you guys made in that previous council, that was part of the process.
I was on that council.
So I'd like to-
I didn't know if you were on the county commi, if you were part of Clackamas County Commission at that time or-
I'd love to ask Council Lehan to comment, if you'd like to.
Sure. I was, I was on that council. And it was no more a commitment than any other decision that we make is a commitment to build out a, a thing. Every neighborhood, certainly every one that takes any time, let's take up, for example, Villeboise, have you heard of that one? How many times have we adopted, adapted the plan at Villeboise? We've changed it multiple times because circumstances change. The, the parks plan for it, the tree plan for it, we had the school, where the school was gonna be located. We, we changed those things because the circumstances change. Interior to the, to the, the development or exterior to it. The other example is ADUs. When ADUs were made to be, you have to allow them, we have to allow them. That came up with Canyon Creek, with the Canyon Creek, the small lot Canyon Creek. And that was controversial at the time, because those are pretty small lots, 2,800 square foot lots. And, and we're allowing ADUs. So, but that was required from the state, was that a state requirement?
Yeah.
That we couldn't disallow accessory dwelling units. And so, we, we managed with that. I, I mean, you, you change these things depending on, you can't promise you will never cut down a tree or whatever, because, you know, like they say, no city is ever done. This isn't the finished product. And, and it will continue to evolve and continue to change depending on the circumstances. So it isn't, this, this isn't, shouldn't be thought of like, you, you have made a commitment that you have to keep now and forever more, or that every future council has to come, to commit to, because the circumstances might be quite different than they were at that time. I mean, that, that's the main thing I was going to say, but-
Sure. I, I know we, our time is ticking. I just wanted to have a couple mentions and then a question for you as well. In our packet, and this is wrapped in, it's referenced in, in the code, it's also, I believe, directly from the equitable housing strategic plan. But on page 147, at the bottom of that page, continuing on 148, it's kind of a definition of what equitable housing is and what we're really talking about here. I do think that those definitions are important to this process. And so it might be something that we all want to review, just as context. And, and that definition talks about the history. It talks about the history of housing too. And where do we, where are we measuring that time began, right? Because, because the history is long and, and very deep when it comes to housing in this country. I know that, having listened to the planning commission's discussion and, and debate on this and working through, you know, some of the concerns, that, that a theme that came out is, is an effort to try to keep the, the look and the feel consistent in this plan for Frog Pond West. And I do think that's important. I think that, you know, we're hearing some concerns from community members, if that is in fact the case. So I appreciate you touching on that, and I appreciate hearing the comments from the planning commission on that. I do also hear questions and concerns about traffic and about if changes would perhaps overburden our schools. And so I wonder if you could give us some kind of details on what the process has been in the past, what it currently is, what it will continue to be, as far as addressing traffic in a new area, as well as, you know, as areas develop and there are new students. What does that communication process look like with the school district, so that they can be prepared to provide, you know, the excellent education that, that we all expect here in our, in our city and, and partner with our school district to provide?
And, and right before you answer, the other thing I was gonna say is, if there was a compromise, to the extent that there was a compromise back and forth, it was about apartments. It was about multifamily and apartments, because they were planned and we eliminated them.
They are not there.
They're still not there. So.
So I don't know if I have time to give a detailed answer, as you asked for.
I do wanna ask the city manager something about time. So is it possible we can move the 10-minute item to the regular meeting?
You must have been channeling me. Yes. I'm gonna ask Zach to provide that under communications in the council meeting.
Thank you.
So certainly, this doesn't change our long tradition of concurrency, we call it, where, you know, we make sure we plan ahead with infrastructure, we have a transportation system plan. And kind of as an interim thing, we've, we've done a study, which we're sharing with the planning commission, will be shared with the council coming up, of really what the short-term impacts of, the potential impacts are to the transportation system. But really, the end result of that is, is also leads to, as we do our update to Frog Pond East and South, we're, we're going to revisit the transportation system. But in short, the system can accommodate it. We can plan the system. We, we know how to do that. We've been doing it for many years, right? There's always traffic, and sometimes we don't want any extra cars on the road. But, I mean, we're, we're set up to continue to plan our infrastructure and our road system as well as we ever have. The, the schools, and the, Wesleyan-Wilsonville School District has a strong tradition with their long-range planning committee. I've kind of seen the inside box of them working with their demographers and their assumptions. They're on top of this stuff. They know how to do this. They know how to buy land and be prepared for future school growth. They do a great job at that. And they, they've, we've been planning added units for many years in Wesleyan and Wilsonville, and the school district has never had a problem keeping up with it. I mean, there's some short-term stuff that sometimes they have to catch up, but, I mean, they've always expressed a willingness and ability to us to be able to accommodate growth.
Thank you, Dan. Now, we have 20 minutes left of this meeting, and we have a 25-minute item for Twist Bioscience, one of our economic development topics.
Do, do you need anything from-
Or before you leave.
Do you need anything from council, or is this just a preview of what's coming?
I, I think I've heard, if there's any additional comments, that if you want us to continue to move forward with that 30% concept, obviously, you'll have to originally vote it up or down, but if there's any last-minute comments, if you want us to continue to think about that and integrate it into our draft.
You meant 30 houses?
Yes. 10%, 30 houses. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, thank you. I think you've, you've got enough. All right.
Okay.
And now we will hear from Mr. Vance, who is on the screen.
All right. Good evening, council. I'm Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager, here with Nick Poppanuk of Tiberius Solutions. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, here tonight to talk about an exciting topic, the implementation of the city's first WIN, Wilsonville Investment Now WIN Zone, to support a large-scale economic development project from a company called Twist Bioscience. Tonight, we'll give you a bit of a background on the overall project, and we'll try to be high-level for our work sessions. We'll be back for Urban Renewal Agency. And tonight's focus is the adoption of the Twist Development Agreement. So to start off, a little background on tip zones in Wilsonville. In 2013, voters approved the creation of six separate properties as individual urban renewal districts referred to as tip zones, intended to provide property tax rebate as a development incentive for qualifying companies to invest in any of the six properties. The construct of the program largely mirrored that of the state's enterprise zone program and required an investment of $25 million and the creation of 75 new jobs at a certain wage level. Ultimately, all of the six sites developed, but none of the projects that occurred on those sites met the eligibility thresholds of the program. So the tip zone program expired in 2019. At this point, we were given direction by the council to redesign the program with input from Urban Renewal Task Force, and staff put together a proposal that we thought was more effective by offering flexible program criteria, such as less restrictions on geographic location, a creative new scoring system that allows flexible consideration of the application inputs, including investment, jobs, and wages, and two tiers of benefits, either four or seven years. We took the proposal to the Urban Renewal Task Force, chaired by Council Aperval, and comprised of residents, businesses, and taxing districts, and received unanimous support. The group was responsible for recommending the program incorporate DEI criteria and prioritize legacy Wilsonville businesses in the program. We incorporated the task force's feedback and brought back a final proposal that was adopted by council in October 2020 in the form of WIN administrative rules, allowing staff to market the program to prospective businesses. Fast forward a couple months, and we have a qualifying WIN application from the exact type of business that we are trying to attract, a large traded sector project that will strengthen the local economy with a significant capital investment and creation of new jobs. The project is from Twist Bioscience, a California-based DNA synthesis firm, proposing to redevelop a nearly 200,000-square-foot facility in Wilsonville, resulting in $70 million of new investments and the creation of 400 new jobs over time. And just to clarify, for the purposes of the development agreement, the commitment from Twist is 200 jobs within the first year of construction, and then 200 additional over time, is what they've stated publicly. The business pre-qualified for the WIN program urban renewal property tax rebate, so we've initiated the process per the WIN administrative rules to implement the incentive. The firm plans to expand into 190,000-square-foot state leased space at Hartworks Industries Center, which is the former Xerox site, helping to double Twist Bioscience's manufacturing capacity, increase speed of production, and enable enhanced product offerings in the synthetic biology and biopharma market. The URA zone is unique in that it would apply to only a sub-portion of the building and tax lot that is occupied by Twist, around 4.4 acres. We think that is the best and cleanest way to track the value increase for the tax rebate. Twist executives have referred to the Wilsonville facility as a high-tech, cutting-edge factory of the future that will help facilitate the company's future growth. The firm will be producing antibody therapeutics and gene manufacturing at the Wilsonville site, hiring a range of local workers from PhD scientists to lab technicians and engineers. We'll go into a little bit more detail during the Urban Renewal Agency, but at this point, I'll pass it over to Nick to talk about the Twist WIN score and also their projected rebate amount.
Okay. Thank you, Jordan. So Nick Poppanuk of Tiberius Solutions, I've been helping the city create the scoring criteria as well as projections of tip revenue that are some from successful-
Hey, Nick. Nick?
Yeah.
Jordan, can you silence yours, your mic? Because we're getting echo.
Yes, no problem.
Go ahead, Nick.
All right. Let's see if that works better.
Yes.
Yep, looks like it. So the slide here is showing where Twist scores in comparison to the thresholds for qualifying incentives and some other hypothetical, hypothetical businesses that were used when city council originally adopted the WIN program administrative rules. As Jordan mentioned, a couple of the key components of the new WIN program, as it revamped the old tip zones, were flexibility, so that a business didn't need to have a hard threshold on both jobs and investment, but instead could have more of one and less on the other to achieve a qualifying score. And then two tiers of qualifications for, for these benefits, with a lower tier giving four years of benefits, tax abatements, and then the higher tier giving seven years. Those two key components of the WIN program, which have made it a particularly attractive and enticing program, do not really apply to this first property coming in here, Twist, because Twist is bringing with it so much investment and so many jobs at such a wage level, that they actually don't need that lower tier, and they also don't need the flexibility. $70 million of investment in and of itself would be enough to qualify, regardless of the jobs, and 200 jobs at the wage level that they're talking about would be enough to qualify, regardless of the investment. So this slide really shows that the, the magnitude of the Twist investment compared to the development examples that the city was considering and hoping for at the time of adopting the WIN program is sort of off the chart. Technically, still on this chart, but in the far top-right quadrant that we can see here. And with that, Jordan, I think our, our second slide says, okay, now that they have qualified, what would be the value of their, their rebate? We show this for the first year that they would be paying taxes. So it's estimated that they would have improvement values of $70 million. Those improvement values include $30 million of equipment machinery, and then $40 million that they'd be putting into the improvements to the building itself. From that, we are estimating here that roughly $48.7 million would come onto the tax rolls as assessed value. Now, there is some gray area here. We won't know exactly what the assessed value is until after construction is complete and the assessor goes through and assesses it. But on top of that, there is a little bit more gray area here, because the local county assessor still has to have a conversation with the State Department of Revenue regarding whether this project will be locally assessed or assessed by the state. And those are two different methodologies that can result in differences in valuation. There's also, when it comes to tenant improvements, questions about how much the tenant improvements exactly would translate into increases in taxable value. So all those little details are, are still to be worked out. What we're showing on this slide here is our most conservative projection of what we think the net increase in assessed value from the improvements would be here at $48.7 million, but it could certainly be higher than that. From the value that we show here, we're showing that the total taxes that Twist would be paying in their first year of operations would be $944,000 per year. But not all of those taxes are subject to urban renewal, so not all of them would be coming into Wilsonville from the, the WIN program. Instead, $597,000 is the amount that we estimate the WIN program would receive in the first year. The difference is due to general obligation bond rates and local option levy tax rates. Those taxes would continue to be paid to the jurisdictions imposing them without being impacted by the WIN program. So roughly 63% of total taxes paid that would come to the urban renewal area through the WIN program. The bulk of that would be then repaid to Twist as a rebate, less the administrative expenses of the city. And these are all showing the taxes in year one. This would be a seven-year program. The amount of money in each subsequent year depends on how much the property value for Twist either appreciates or depreciates over time. And again, that is also a little bit of an unknown, as every exact piece of machinery and equipment will have its own depreciation schedule, and the exact amount of the building itself and how much it appreciates over time has some uncertainty as well. But when we look at the high end and low end of our forecasts, in terms of how much tip revenue could be generated over the seven-year period, we're looking at something between 2.9 and 5.6 million over that period of time. But the year-one numbers are most certain, because they don't require making crystal ball estimates of the appreciation or depreciation rates over time. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Jordan for the next few slides before questions and discussion.
All right. Thank you, Nick. I'll just talk a little bit about implementation, and then we can move into questions. So the action we're, we're asking the Urban Renewal Agency to take this evening is adoption of the Twist Bioscience Development Agreement by Resolution 315, codifying the terms of the- the agreement between the two entities. As a reminder, the construct of this program is pay-for-performance, so each year there will be a true-up and verification process where the business only receives the rebate after they've followed through with their obligations and their tax payments. You'll see in the agreement that Twist is required to pay taxes upfront and on time and provide the city verification of their commitments by January 31st of each year. Then, the city will review and verify and pay rebate to Twist by July 21st of each year for the seven years, after deducting a 10% administrative cost to cover staffing to run the program. The next step for implementation would be to create the single-site urban renewal district per the WIN administrative rules. This requires authorization from the Wilsonville, Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency, which staff will seek to obtain at the next meeting in June. We'll bring back a draft urban renewal report and plan for review. Following this, there'll be a two-to-three-month timeline where staff will commence a consult and confer process with the impacted taxing districts, where they will have 45 days, 45 days to comment. We'll provide a briefing to the Clackamas County Commissioners and other key taxing districts. Then we'll take the proposed Twist Bioscience WIN Zone proposal to the Planning Commission to ensure conformance to the comprehensive plan. Lastly, there'll be a public hearing and City Council vote on non-emergency ordinance on August 16th, 16th, where we'll bring back comments from the taxing districts, as well as a final Twist WIN Zone planning report for council's review. Thank you for your time. Again, I'll go into more detail this evening. We're very excited about this proposal. We think it's smart economic development and a win for the community and a win for the business. So thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I know the council developed the WIN program last year, and this is, I saw in a meeting of the Greater Portland Inc. that this is one of the most significant economic investments in the entire region. So I think this has been a, something, something to really celebrate this company. Any questions on this proposal? Council Leehan?
Well, is there going to be more discussion at the urban renewal thing? They said they were going to go into a little more depth about, about the actual business. So I don't need to ask, ask it now because we-
Mr. Vance, can we discuss that further with you? We, we do have a minute here, a couple minutes, if you want to ask a question.
Well, I, I just wanted to ask, I don't know much about this kind of business. I couldn't really ascertain out of their synthetic DNA sounds. Whoa, I never heard of that. But, but, so I wondered about, in their processing, is there anything, is there anything hazardous about it? Should we be concerned, or do they have, have to take any special precautions with any of their, their processes? I have no idea what their processes are.
That, that would be something that would be dealt with during the development process.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you talking about pre-treatment stuff? For our wastewater, all that?
Well, just, or, or anything. I don't know if the things they do are dangerous, toxic, those kinds of things, probably not. But, but I don't know anything about, completely.
Good point. We've had some discussions internally. We, we don't have all the answers to that yet.
Yeah.
But that would be dealt with through the development process.
Yeah.
My, my understanding is that they are a biosafety level one lab.
Oh, okay.
But I, but I, I am not certain about that. So it would be nice to know.
And I think, Chris, is, is the CFO going to be-
Can you ask Jordan, perhaps?
Are we having a presentation?
Jordan, who's, who's, is, is anybody from Twist going to be available tonight?
The COO wasn't able to make it, but the chief architect is supposed to be present for citizen input.
For citizen input. Okay. So any questions the council may have about processing and what they do? Would they be able to answer that, or would that be more the COO?
No, it would be him.
Okay.
It would seem like a reasonable citizen inquiry kind of thing that citizens might want to-
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Jordan.
So have, have, this is enough for this work session on the topic of this company qualifying for the WIN program.
Sounds excellent. We'll be asking you to vote on that later.
With that, I am going to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene here at-
Three minutes.
At, let's, let's take a, a five-minute break. So like 7:05, no later, we'll reconvene. Meeting is adjourned.